Anyway, you're live now and you're the host.
Thank you, Chief.
I call this joint session to order. Please join me in a moment, in a silence, please, if you have a cellphone, silence it. Thank you. So first order of business is the presentation by Mr. Lindsay. All right. I guess we should call the roll. That was silly. We'll call the roll. Mr. Mango, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Clark.
Reed.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Lawler.
Yeah.
Spicer. Williamson. And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Okay, and.
No, I said here.
Yep, I'm here. And Mr. McCall, you're here with the EDC and I saw Amy. And Mr. Evans, who's dual-hatted. And Mr. Evans, you're here with the DDA.
Right.
And I believe that Mark, you're here representing the chamber. Okay, so without further ado, Mr. Lindsay.
All right, I've got a presentation that I think Haley is gonna be able to put up on the screen. Is that right, Haley? Oops, she's doing that. All right, so just, I wanted to do just an introduction. I think I've met all of you before, but Richard Lindsay, I was brought onto the MATA board in 2016. Served two years as a chair of the MATA board and now serving both as a board member and as counsel for the, for MATA board. So got a fair amount of experience with this model. And as I'll go through this quickly. It's, it's not perfect. There's, there's some issues. One of the things that came up in some conversations a couple of weeks ago is just the idea of this being, eliminating these entities, combining the entities together. And as the city attorney pointed out, and I would, I would agree. It's not really possible to eliminate the governmental entities. The chamber is something that can be absorbed into a nonprofit if that's the choice of the community to do that. But it's not the, the entities that are the, kind of the tax collecting and then the regulatory authorities have to stay in place. But they can contract for all their services with this new entity. So that's, that's kind of the model. So the, so the first page or the first slide is the challenge we had in Marshall, which is similar to the challenge. In Albion, we had four different entities pursuing different parts of economic development. The chamber handled events, small and large business and tourism. The Marshall LDFA, local development finance authority, basically is a tax capture entity that deals with industrial park. And because of the nature of the industrial park, it has a fair amount of revenue, we'll call it extra revenue, but has revenue where often other governments don't, every other entities don't. Marshall DDA, which is also funded by a small millage and by tax capture, which perpetually was underfunded downtown, as I think you're aware. Don't really capture much tax because there's not, there, there's not much improvement that allows that tax, tax capture. So they often struggle with, with how that's funded. And then the city of Marshall was doing various, various efforts to support entities. So it was kind of a haphazard mix of things. Part of the, the next slide deals with the limitations of that model. The LDFA had one staff member that answered to the LDFA board that met once a month. What didn't always have good direction on what that employee was supposed to be doing, didn't really answer to the city, didn't really answer to the, the LDFA, just based on the amount of time that the LDFA was available, the board was available. DDA had one employee that was the downtown development director. There was never really enough money to fund that position. And so that was always, the funding was always an issue. The city had various resources like GIS, but no coordination with economic development. And then the chamber was focused on community-wide events, but not necessarily doing what the community wanted as far as supportive of small businesses and encouraging new businesses. So next slide deals with the opportunities presented by the MATA model. And the removal of silos is a very important, very important one. Consolidation of administrative support services. So the chamber had, you know, had its kind of administrative staff. The, the city had some administrative staff that dealt with the LDFA. There were these bits and pieces that were doing different things and it, it wasn't coordinated. There also was after you to have one CEO and a staff that represents a coordination of various efforts to promote small businesses, large businesses and tourism. And then one of the issues that i- is always an issue with economic development organizations is the ability to protect information as needed relative to FOIA and Open Meetings Act. So th- this has been a big concern in Marshall. It should be a concern in every community. How do I know where my tax dollars are going and what businesses are coming to town? And I, I think, I think Amy, the president, would, would testify to this. It is a tough thing to balance because if you're an open, if you're an entity, the subject of FOIA, and you get a FOIA request about what's going on, there's not really any way to shield it. I mean, you can, you can maybe negotiate the, the scope of the FOIA. A lot, just the nature of smaller towns, often people know what's going on and so they will, will not push those things. But a push really comes to shove and you are something like the EDC or the DDA that's, that's a governmental entity, you're subject to FOIA and you're gonna have to turn that information over if it comes up. And that can be absolutely a killer for, for new projects that are coming to town. So, so that ability to shield information is important. It is also important for the entity to have transparency and be able to explain how the, you know, how the money's being used and those types of things. So, you know, have to strike the appropriate balance. And then the ability to support by administrative service contracts, other city efforts. Something that's happened in Marshall and I, it would be interesting in Albion as well as the development of neighborhood improvement authorities. And so there's been two of those expanded. And so the option is to either look to existing city services to try to support those, which is always an issue with shrinking city budgets and how that's gonna be done. You know, or to find an entity, if you have an entity like MATA, to allow them, that entity to overtake those, those support services for those additional entities. And then another thing that happened in MATA that was a very positive thing was the ability to add township representatives. Marshall, like Albion, is surrounded by townships that are probably going to be through agreements where the, much of the development takes place in the future. Marshall Township has a master agreement, development agreement with the city of Marshall. And so was, there was representative Marshall Township that was added, added to the MATA board as well. Which I'll talk a little bit more about. So the process of forming MATA, the city, the DDA and the LDFA and the chamber negotiated an agreement that provided that a new 501(c)(3) would be formed, which was the Marshall Area Economic Development Alliance. MATA then entered into an administrative services agreement with the city, the DDA, the LDFA and the chamber to provide economic development, tourism and small business development services. MATA would, would basically pull some employees from those, those former entities, would have a new location. Actually, there was a spot that was next to the city hall, part of city hall that was, was leased to MATA for a dollar a year. And then the initial board was comprised of representatives of each of those entities. And it was formed in 2014. And a part of this was the revenue for the accommodation tax was transferred to MATA from the chamber. This was something that that agreement, I'm not sure if everyone's familiar, familiarity with it, but it's a 1984 agreement between the city or between the county and the jurisdictions. And basically provides that there's a formula based on the number of beds that determines how that tax is apportioned between the cities. And then some of it goes to the, the county visitor intervention bureau, basically to do tourism for the whole city, but Marshall and Albion, Battle Creek each get a piece of that money. So that was a big part of the revenue. With MATA that had to be assigned over to, to MATA from the chamber. So evolution of BETA, a year into the model, there just, just through happenstance, three different people resigned within a month or two of each other. Suddenly, there was no staff left. And so the decision was made by the board to contract for a hundred percent of the services with Southus Michigan First, which is Ron Kitchens, is the CEO and now the Kalamazoo. As part of that process, the decision was made to consolidate the various entities. So there, so as the city attorney noted, Marshall did this analysis as well and decided the DDA and LDFA could not be eliminated. However, they could be, they could be consolidated in a sense that there were joint appointments between the two. And so what they started to do was have a meeting that was a DDA slash LDFA meeting. It was the same people on both boards, same chair for both boards. They have two separate budgets and they are, they're legally two separate entities. But the idea was to decrease their administrative impact as much as possible. And then the chamber was also dissolved. And so that took a vote with the membership of the chamber and MATA then filed an assumed name to operate as Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce. So over time, so next is the changes in board structure. Over time, the board was changed from being representative of the various founding organizations to representing various interests in Marshall. So right now there are representatives for large business, small business, tourism, city government, county government at large. And then, as I said before, added a seat for any township having a master development agreement with the city of Marshall. And then the, over, again, over time, decision was made that Southus Michigan First services model was not working. Southus Michigan First focuses a lot on large manufacturers. And so what happened over about a one-year period that Southus Michigan First was in place is there was, there was basically a general revolt among the small businesses in town because they didn't feel like they were being, having the support that they needed. And it was consensus that it was, made sense with the board to go back to actually hiring a CEO to have MATA operate separately. And so Scott Fleming, I'm sure many of you have met, was hired as the second major CEO in 2016. He had a very successful four years over that four-year period, developed the staff that focused on economic development, downtown development, small business services and tourism. There was a recognition within MATA that when the downtown is at ninety-five percent occupancy, that also supports large businesses, quality of life and tax base. So again, there had been, in, in past iterations of this, there had been less focus on the downtown. And this was more focused on the downtown with the idea that what was it gonna take to get large employers to move here and to stay here? And again, that, that downtown business, the education, the hospital are all parts that, that support those things. So the, the role of MATA has been to work closely with the city to support economic development. Work closely with the schools, Marshall Public Schools and KCC to support workforce development. And. Last slide is lessons learned. It has been the experience with the, the MATA model that a unified approach to problem solving is more beneficial to the entire community than a piecemeal approach. About a year and a half ago. I'm forgetting the name of that, with the large company that ended up getting a huge tax break or incentives from Wisconsin to locate there, the manufacturers. Screens, I'm forgetting the name. But they, Marshall was on with our site to the west of Marshall, was on the list and we hosted the company leadership. And so when they came to town, I mean, they brought a bus full of about thirty-five people, company leaders and CEOs and different people. I'm sorry, Intelux was the name of the company, sorry, I had that moment there. When we sat with those individuals, we had county representatives to talk about sewer improvements. And we had the city people to talk about the city services and we had the schools to talk about the school services, KCC representative to talk about the job training. Availability. And we had people talking about the housing availability. And so rather than each of the individual entities, you know, presenting their little piece of it. It was an approach to the company to say, the company is, or the, the city is, or I should say, the community is all in on this project. We will do what we need to do to solve the problems that you present to us and we're ready to move forward. And so we've, we've had, I think, three different meetings like that and MATA, MATA has coordinated those things. And in my opinion, they, they've gone very well. And that's what, that's what developers, site selectors and companies are looking for is a unified approach. Because again, they literally have hundreds of spots to locate their companies. And it's really about what, what the community can do to put together. And then, of course, how the community can work with, you know, with the state, with the county to be able to present additional incentives as needed. The ability to have confidentiality when needed is beneficial to attracting the development. Again, we've been, we've been careful in trying to maintain that separation between government and non-government. And again, you know, BCU, you know, Marshall is not alone in this. That 501(c)(3) becomes a separate entity and, you know, it, it, it is, can be used to protect things when needed. MATA has also been used to bridge the gap between the townships and the city of Marshall, which there's always, I think, a slight conflict or slightly different interests between the city and the township. But the city can't develop without land and the townships can't develop without infrastructure. And so they're necessarily dependent on each other. MATA is also able to pursue separate grant funding coordination with, with other entities. So from Cronin Foundation, the Marshall Community Foundation to Battle Creek Community Foundation, been able to pursue a number of different grant opportunities. The most recent thing that that was, was done by MATA was to purchase the trolley, which is gonna be run through downtown Marshall and COVID-19 is over, whatever that is. I was also going to go to, I actually had the opportunity to go on the inaugural trip of that, which started in Marshall and went to Albion, to the brewery in Albion, and then went from, from Albion to Battle Creek to Marshall. I think it's something that will be a very positive thing going forward. And that was paid for entirely by, by grant funding. Obviously, there's been administrative savings. And then, as I said, there's been support for new tax increment financing entities. Marshall, as Albion does, struggles with how to, how to incentivize additional housing. It's very difficult to attract new industry when there's zero or seemingly less than zero housing availability right now in, in either Marshall or Albion. So that's something that's, that's gonna be pursued going forward. So that's my, try to keep it short for a lawyer, that's short. So any, any questions anybody have, I'd be glad to, glad to answer them.
My question is, what are the, the process checks and balances to maintain the revenue stream separate, most importantly, the hospitality tax income that by law or statute is required to be expended on putting heads in beds, bringing people in to, to be overnight? So how do you strictly keep that segregated?
So I would, I was appointed to the county when this originally came up. And I, I remember distinctly a group of Marshall leaders coming out of a conference room with Kelly Scott, leading the way and them all looking very upset and very disgruntled because she had told them, Mr. Mayor, exactly what you just said. You can't use this money, whatever you want to. The county, the county statute or the county ordinance and the state law says you have to use it for the following. And so, so part of how that evolved over time was that Kelly Scott, myself, were both added to the board. And then Kelly Scott has stayed on the MATA board and has been the treasurer. It's not a, not a coincidence that she's treasurer. And she has watched and made sure that, to the extent MATA uses that money, that it's used for those purposes. Now, there's a fair amount of flexibility within, you know, within the statute and with what's allowed, but that money has to be used for tourism. And so what that's turned into in Marshall is a very aggressive social media and marketing campaign. And so we've, we've used the, the phrase choose Marshall, obviously focused around the, the fountain symbol. But have used that to do a lot of advertising relative to that, to bring people to town. And we continue to have debates about, so the head, heads and beds tax, you know, says that you're gonna, it, it goes for entities or for events that are going to be spending the night. And so then we have a skeleton festival that has a one-day festival. People aren't necessarily gonna spend the night. Can we, can we use it for that? And there's, there's, there's question, you know, festival of forks. I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of events that, do people really travel and spend the night for those things? And, and generally, Kelly has been supportive and the county's been supportive. If it's bringing people to the town, they're not gonna test, you know, did you actually spend the night when you're there? They're gonna be happy that it's tourism and it's gonna be bringing people to the town. But to divert that into something completely different. A, I'd recommend that there be a, a county representative on the board, whether it's Kelly or somebody else from, from the county and, and be, you know, that person would be part of that oversight relative to the county and make sure that money's spent appropriately.
Silence is deafening.
Yeah.
So in our case, we have no staff associated with the DDA. I think we have one and a half full-time positions with the chamber, I believe. Mark, you know if that's right?
Normally, we would have one in a part-time, two-thirds of the year, bringing on to help with festival of forks and other major events. As you're aware, we're currently without right now.
Right. And then with the EDC. Is that currently, normally, is that three full-time positions, Amy?
Right now, we have two full-time positions. And the other positions are, are open and depending on the discussions here and how far COVID goes and what happens in the future, we'll have to build that out.
Jackson model with, not Jackson, I'm sorry, Marshall. MATA. They have the CEO and a couple of staff or what's the numbers, Richard?
Right now, there are, there is a CEO, there is a economic development person, there's a chamber person, and there is a tourism person. And there are a couple of people that, the model in Marshall is to have that visitor center downtown Marshall open eight to five Monday through Saturday. So there's a couple of part-time people that come in and fill in different times. Don't, don't have benefits or anything, so they're, they're part-time. So, you know, four to five full-time people, a couple part-time. So I think the staffing would be similar. One, one thing about, and I, Kelly indicated she would be glad to present in the future and she had a conflict tonight, but part of what the funding shows is there, there is a little bit more that comes into Marshall just based on the number of hotel rooms. So that is, that is a little bit of a difference. And I think, to test my memory, it's, I think it's in the one fifty range. And I think Albion is in the seventy-five range. Mark, do you know that right offhand? Or maybe, maybe the seventy-five was with the new hotel. It was gonna go up that much. So it's a little bit of a difference.
Yeah, low seventies is, I believe, what we budgeted for this year.
Yeah.
The organizations in the Marshall pay an administrative fee? Fee for the administrative services?
Yeah, the way. Yeah, the, the way it's funded is the city, the city, the DDA and the LDFA all pay an administrative fee. And then that money goes back into the, the budget. So that, so the revenue streams are LDFA, DDA, city, chamber, memberships. And then and then the heads and beds tax, accommodations tax. There was a lot of discussion at the beginning. So, so Southus Michigan First and I think Gamma and, and I could be wrong, in, in Jackson, both take private contributions to, to help fund. And there, there was discussion about that. It never, it never got anywhere. But that is a possibility that you could have private entities could, you know, make larger contributions. Like Marshall, you have a, a large nonprofit in your midst. And, you know, certainly that, you know, those are discussions about, you know, are there other entities that make sense for them to contribute? And those are, you know, possible ideas.
Are there questions from anyone?
So it didn't, it didn't take any new money? It didn't take any new money to get this?
No, it did not. It was basically reassigning existing revenue streams into one entity.
Cause I think in some instances, we have some entities that don't have a revenue stream, so.
Right. And then Marshall, the, the DDA. It's never been to the point of no revenue, but they were down, I think, to so that they, they, they exist almost all of the money that the Marshall DDA brings in, goes back to finance the, that exists for Oaklawn. And there's an agreement relative to that. And so there's very little net revenue from that entity. And so, so part of what MATA does is finds ways to reallocate some of the money that so the LDFA, it's probably more akin to the EDC and has a little bit more revenue. Actually, it has a lot more revenue than the A does to the realization or acknowledgement industrial park. And so how, way that's, questions asked about it. And how can it be done, you know, sports industrial park? So the DDA didn't have much money that won't ever, that there's another ten years or fifteen years left on the bonds for, for the parking structure. And so it would be just, there would be no, no funding available. Oop, I dropped it. Did that, I'm not sure when I got cut off. Do they have any other questions along those lines?
Well, most of what you're saying sounded like you're underwater, but I got the general gist of it. So tell me from your perspective, what would be maybe the top couple reasons that people raise why they were resistant to this model?
Resistant. It, so it requires the different boards involved to give up some of their power. And so there's, you know, there's always territory and people. All, all of us, of course, excluded, but other people don't, don't like to give up power. And so that's always an issue. You know, from a, from a community perspective. It's, it's hard to, I mean, cause it just, it just, it makes sense to have a coordinated effort. And the, that, the, the state law, you know, all these different laws, all these different entities were created over time to meet specific purposes. And so the question then is, how do you coordinate the different pieces of them? And that, this is really a way And that, this is really a way to try to do that, um, in a way that makes sense. So I, you know, ev- absent the kind of giving up the power. There, there were some, there were some people in Marshall that were very strong chamber supporters and didn't want to see the chamber go away. And so there was a period when the chamber was dissolved and there was some thought that there would just, it would just be made and there'd be no chamber going forward. And Mark knows this because I served on the Albion Chamber. Um, I, I personally think the chamber has a place and it, it should be to support small business and encourage small business. And so when I became chair, we kind of, we brought that back and had, um, yeah, you know, so again, did the file the assumed name and, and became the Marshall Chamber. People aren't going to Google, you know, Marshall beta because it's a made up name. So they're not going to know what that is. But they do Google Marshall Chamber and they expect the Marshall Chamber to support small businesses and provide services and do those things. So that I, I think that was a mistake to, to try to drop the chamber idea. I, I would say if you're going to dissolve the chamber, I think that's a way to have one less board. But there needs to be a chamber presence going forward in, in the new entity, in my opinion.
That's kind of a question I had because if you've got three CEOs, do you, all of those the people under there then, because probably each group had its own board. Is not consolidated into one board now, or you just don't have that many?
At, at this point, there's one made a CEO. So the chamber doesn't exist anymore. There is a board chair of the DDA that is a board chair of the DDA and the LFA. That person, you know, again, holds those, those joint meetings. That's, that's the administrative structure. So it's really just that CEO. That CEO then works for the made a board. He, in this case, we just heard Jim Durian is the new, uh, made a CEO. He reports, he provides reports to the DDA and the LFA and then the city from time to time as well, uh, through those, that administrative services agreement.
Councilman Smith?
Yes, I'm, I would be interested to know, um, especially from the, uh, the heads of our three groups here. Uh, what do you feel going forward are going to be the pluses and also the minuses for each of the three entities when they do come together? Somebody's got to give something. I mean, somewhere, uh, somebody's going to get less than what they have now. So I just wonder how that would shake out. Thank you. I get a.
From the chambers point to, um, there are some efficiencies that could benefit the city of Albion. If we're spending less than administrative costs, cost, that's more that we could do for small businesses, uh, and benefit communities. In that aspect, that, that's what we're looking at the benefit. And if we can learn from what went on in Marshall and what not to do and have a chamber presence from the beginning, that still fills those roles from an event standpoint and support of business, small, medium-sized businesses. That would be our concern to see that lined up, uh, agreed upon from the beginning.
My DDA, I think it's already been kind of communicated. Um, we've not had a staff. We've not had funding. I think it's important to have a DDA. Um, to me, it's all about, um, working together and consolidating services to make sense. I think we did a tremendous job when we were needed to coordinate benefits for Project Tiger. So it can be done, but I think it would be done much more efficiently in this model. I don't think we lose any services, uh, from the DDA, the chamber or the EDC. Done correctly. I think we can learn from Marshall and, um, and Richard's experience with them. I don't look at it as losing anything. I look at it as coming together. I think it made sense pre-COVID. I think it even makes more sense post-COVID. I really don't think our community would, um, be harmed one bit in lack of services by this consolidation. And I personally think it may improve.
What call?
And, and I, I would, I would concur. Yes, I would, I would concur. I think, I think that, um, I wouldn't even think of it as a going into it about what we would lose. I would go into it, you know, with the mindset that it's going to be an advantage. And how do we focus on taking, um, you know, the greatest advantage of that advantage? You know, so now that we have this kind of coordination, because I think, you know, many times when you have, um, folks doing things, you know, um, separate entities start to maybe drift a little bit into, you know, kind of, well, what is our true purpose and should we be doing that? Or should someone else be doing that? Where if you have those things coordinated, then you don't have any wasted effort. You know, so I think it could be a tremendous, um, uh, benefit, you know? But anything and everything is about having the right people in place to make good things happen. And, and, and let me just say one other thing. And, you know, in terms of, of board leadership and, and those kinds of things, you know, particularly, um, from my perspective as a EDC board member, you know, I'm a volunteer that serves at the pleasure of the mayor and the city. And so, um, that's why I'm a part of the board, not to, um, view my ego or build my resume.
It's very hard to, what's your impression? Do you see any significant hurdles? I know this was done in Jackson, not quite the same. Uh, I don't know how long they, they stayed organized that way, but they went back and separated and it's, obviously it's working in Marshall. And I think the other city that I heard was Paw Paw. But, uh, what's your assessment of it? Do you have concerns?
I, 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 you know, it, it's, it's hard to say without seeing, um, the, the potential agreements as to how this would be set up. I think conceptually, I don't have, uh, the attorney in me always has reservations about everything. That's, that, that's just kind of incumbent on being an attorney. But, um, conceptually, I don't have a problem with it. I would want to see how the agreements read and, and how we set this up. So I, I guess I, I, I don't have a great answer for that until I see exactly how this is, um, set up to play out. And, and at that point, I can probably advise you a little bit better as to whether I think there's going to be any pitfalls or what have you. I, but you know, I, as I've already stated, I mean, hypothetically, you can, um, staff the boards of the DDA and the EDC with the same people. And so in effect, while they're separate corporate sub-political bodies, they are in, in effect, one body. Obviously you can't combine with the chamber, but, um, there's, as, as Mr. Lindsay has outlined, there's, there's different ways to, to set that up. So again, conceptually, I, I, I think it's interesting. I think it's, uh, doable, but I'd want to see the agreements.
City manager, you have any thoughts on it?
I have just, um, just for clarification. So we have several brownfield agreements through our DDA. And now, so if we do follow this model, the DDA will still be in place. So we will continue to have those agreements or how does that, I guess that's where I'm just kind of unclear on that. Or how that would play out if we transition to this model.
Yeah. And I, I didn't mention, um, so the, so the DDA, LFA is also the EDC and Marshall, which doesn't do anything, who does something every once in a while, has a bank account, but doesn't do anything else. Is also the Brownfield Authority. And so what, what has happened is there's co-appointments. Every, the same people are appointed to all those boards. They, the last time the EDC or the Brownfield Authority did something, it was to contribute some money for the, uh, the county transportation study. And so that's been like a year and a half ago. So, so there's, they, they exist if needed for a specific project, but there's not any need to really do anything. And then the, then Maida provides support again to all of those. It just, those almost never meet, almost never do anything. So I didn't include them. But all those legal entities would stay in place. They would just meet whatever the statutory minimum, if there was one, or they'd meet as, as needed.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Absolutely. Go ahead.
And, and maybe Mr. Lindsay has an answer for this. Maybe he doesn't. I'm just, I'm just, the attorney in me is rolling through things in my head. Richard, was there ever any issue, um, as it relates to the state or otherwise in dealing with the expenditure of, of, um, for example, the, the money that's taxed captured for the DDA for this partic- in, in this particular model? Or, or was that not an issue?
Oh, and that's, that's something that I've had a number of conversations when I sat the county when we were kind of considering what this looked like. And then with, um, being a made a board member and basically the, the, the money is divided into buckets to the extent the LFA money is used to, for things outside of the LFA, that's explainable and justifiable. So things like marketing that helped the entire community. Um, if that money, you know, the LFA money specifically to purchase the trolley. I think that would be a problem. So, so there, so there are limits on it, but that's part of what is a very good familiarity with the money is divided into economic development, um, tourism and then chamber services. And so the, the, those buckets, and then it, it flows through the budget and those, those buckets, because those are kind of the statutory pieces. And I guess what's a long way of saying there, there's probably some limit on the money and, you know, BCU is another, is an entity that is doing things like developing the downtown, um, their, most of their revenue comes from the industrial park. But they're using the money in other places because things like a brewery in downtown Baba Creek helps the entire community. So, so you know, how defensible is that at the state level? I'm guessing the state, the city attorney signed off on it, but I don't, I don't know the detail. So. I, I think it's a, it's a fair concern though, and it needs to be appropriate.
Are there other questions, comments by panelists? Anything else you wish to add, Mr. Lindsay?
Hold up, I have a dog, dog moment.
We know that's Councilman Reed's dog.
Those are actually mine. So there's, somebody's here. Uh, I, I just want to say one, one thing that was an issue that I think I've expressed this to, um, to other individuals. Initially, the, so the, so the city has a city attorney and the city attorney needs to represent the interest of the city in negotiating this. When this new entity is, is set up, um, it needs to have a council and needs to have, or needs to have an attorney and needs to have a CPA, in my opinion. The made a kind of relied on the city to do some of this and that. It was somebody's second or third job at the city. And of course I know, uh, uh, city workers have, are just because of budget cuts are, are given lots and lots of things to do. And then there was an attorney that kind of did it a little bit here, a little bit there. And so stuff never got done. It, it's, it's important to, um, it's important to make sure the agreements are in place correctly and the, you know, if they're going to lease space from the city. And I'm not, not saying that would, but in made his case, please kick the space in the city that those pieces are actually put in place and taken care of and resolved. You know, I don't, I, I don't, wouldn't imagine it being a, an enormous amount of money to start up, but it's worth having a little bit of money to get those things set up right, get the systems in place, get the CEO in place and then, you know, then go from there. So that would be my only final thought.
That, uh, Ms. Norris, who is a member of the EDC is here and, uh, if we can recognize her, I think she has, if she wishes to contribute. Cause she has experience with the, uh, when it was done in Jackson, how long it lasted, and then it finally went away.
She has been added to the panelists.
Thank you. Annette?
Okay, now you can hear me. Um, yeah, the enterprise group in Jackson was created. It housed, at one point it was P-Tech, um, the Chamber, the Small Business Development Center, the Economic Development Group and the Jackson Area Manufacturers Association. Um, I can't tell you when the enterprise group started. But I do know that first the chamber left and then they went out on their own again. And then P-Tech and the Small Business Development Center were kind of dissolved. And JAMA left a couple of years ago. So the only thing that's left there now is the, the Economic Development Organization, basically. So I know the finances became intertwined and, and intertwined and all kinds of crazy stuff. And each organization had an executive director. Then there was a president or CEO of the enterprise group as a whole. So why they all left and why they really no longer exist as a group, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I do know that say 10 years later, they no longer are together as an organization.
Thank you, Annette.
Yep.
Then any other comments, questions or further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just, I, I would mention, um, so, so Scott Fleming went from being the CEO of made a going back to Jackson and being the chair of the Anchor Initiative. And so the Anchor Initiative is the large businesses in Jackson, Consumers Energy and the hospital, some others, trying to get people to live, work and eat in downtown Jackson, which is a challenge. I'm sure Scott's up to it. Um, Scott was in Jackson before he came, actually I think he went to Texas. And I think he might've been there for some of those, those, um, discussions when they were brought together and maybe went back apart. To the extent I can reach out to anybody in Jackson, I'd be glad to make connections and ask kind of what went wrong there. I, I really don't have much information about it. It was, I was in Jackson in, in 2009 and prior, and then was kind of gone for that 10-year period. So I'm not really what happened, sure what happened. But Scott might be a resource to, to talk to about what went wrong there. Or, or maybe it was just, maybe it didn't go wrong. It was just.
Steve's on NACI. I don't know if you're familiar with that name, but he was actually the CEO at the time that it started. And Scott Fleming followed Steve. Yeah, and he did. He left. He went to Texas and then he came back. Uh, so he probably is a really good resource. He was kind of right in the middle of everything. So I would say Scott would be an excellent resource for that.
Yeah, yeah. Didn't mean to phrase it what went wrong. It just, they made a, made a change. So.
I don't know if anything went wrong. Maybe nothing went wrong. Maybe they just all wanted their own independence again. I'm not sure.
And I think we should just do ours.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Evans.
First, I just want to say thank you to all of you for doing this today. I think it's a, a very good discussion. So thank you for all of, um, to all of you. I don't want to push. I want to encourage. DDA's never had a very active position since I've been here. Um, I think we need to have. But if we can keep this move, if we can all work together and keep this moving forward, a couple of these organizations are very thin on staff. And we're all kind of holding in a holding pattern to see if this is going to develop or not. If it's not, we got to get on our ponies and start attracting some staff. If it, if it is, and we know that there's some direction, um, we probably could hold off. So, uh, again, I just want to thank everybody for doing this. And if we can just stay focused, because I would hate to lose any of these organizations or members of any of these organizations if, if this takes a while. If if this takes a while, so I just want to encourage to keep focused and moving forward and I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. If there's no further comments, we'll open up for public comments. So Chief, who do we have for public comments? Anyone got their hand raised?
I'm hosting. We do. Garrett Brown.
So we got three people, okay. Mr. Brown.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to be very quick about this and I mentioned this at the council meeting previously and then also at the EDC meeting. And, you know, just in all due respect to Mr. Evans, I think one of the things that. And I've always even as mayor and as a community member has really pushed is the fact that. When we, like like Herm said, we do these things as volunteers for the the benefit of the community. And lots of times we're not paid to do it. But our perspectives are not. The end all be all of what is actually going on in Albion. And so like when. When I hear people say there's, there's, they don't see any downside to it, it makes me kind of nervous because I, what, what, the, the things that I look at and see from a. A governance perspective, which is really big for me, is I think it has the potential to weaken. The representation of diversity in the leadership of how funds in our community are used, right? Because one of the things that I. Just really frankly had a concern about even with the relationship with the EDC and. ARC was the fact that, you know, like the the college had trustee members that were. On the Board of ARC and the college president was on the EDC Board and it was like very. You know, almost kind of like incestuous in a way, like there's, there's a lot of like. Close networks which weren't really representative of the diversity of the community. So I think it has a potential to further. It lessens the representation of what's really going on in Albion, so that's the first concern. Then I think in the presentation by Mr. Lindsay, there was a reference about it helps to get around. FOIA and the Open Meetings Act. And so I, 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 I would never think that. Getting around systems built for public transparency is a, is a good thing. So I don't know if that's something that can be negotiated. But I, I, I don't, I don't see that as a good thing of. Having an entity that's able to get around. Freedom of Information Act and the Open Meetings Act disclosure protections. And then the other concern, I guess the other major concern I had is, and this was a concern I had with ARC and EDC, was. If this, if if you have all these entities and they're giving their money and putting, putting it into a pot, how do we make sure that? The board seats and the administrative time are allocated. To represent the, the amount of money that's being put in, right? Because if, if the Tifa puts in. I'm just making up numbers, a hundred thousand dollars, but then the DDA puts in. Five thousand dollars. How, and the Chamber puts in another, you know, amount. How do we make sure that the time? Of the administrator is respecting those amounts, right? Because we can't use. You know, public funds, you, you can't like work on something that might be a, a chamber based kind of project. On public fun time, right? And the same thing like board seats, i- in, you know, it's like. If if most of the money is coming from one entity, are they entitled to more board seats? So I think those are things that. Okay, thank you, but those need to be worked out.
Have Mr. Becky.
Hi, Emily Verbecky, 1217 East Porter Street. As a resident of Albion and managing member of several downtown businesses. I, pre-COVID, really felt like. The entities were working to. Consolidate or to work together to have more transparency. And even pre-COVID, that was a significant challenge. I think. You know. A lot of items were, could have been. Worked on together and we would have gone further with activities, events. Economic development strategies and so I saw probably even pre-COVID that that was a struggle. For us as a small community to really. Work together in making some great strides across Albion, not just in the downtown area, but across Albion. With our economic, economic development and tourism. And when COVID hit, it came to a screeching halt. I think. I, I can't speak for many other businesses, but I have felt very alone, very unsupported. I don't. I I wonder what my Chamber membership gets me or provides any sort of service to me. You know, I I continue to pay all of our taxes. For our downtown businesses and our personal property tax, taxes for, for, for services for being a downtown business. And I occasionally get emails that are really just sharing links. To state level resources, but there's been very little support for local businesses. During this pre pandemic time and part of it, a huge part of it is because of. The cuts that have been made and have to have been made during this time. If we had to cut those and make those cuts as a consolidated organization. We could have limped forward and we could have helped everybody not feel like they were so alone. And just treading water in the middle of the ocean and that is what it's felt like. And so in, you know, in some ways, I, I also really. Feel strongly that this needs to move forward in a very purposeful way and and an effective way. Because we are losing time to help all businesses. Downtown and in the surrounding areas and even businesses that are, you know, like Mr. Lindsay said. In the township's areas to help us get prepared to propel ourselves forward. As things continue to open up more and more and more. So I am especially in support and as a DDA member, understand that. My ability as, you know, I will likely not or lose a DDA board seat and lose. That ability to be a part of decisions, but I'm willing to do that because. I think that. That I'm not alone in this feeling that we're all.
Three minutes, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, Joyce Spicer.
I just said that I'm supportive of the idea. But what I would like is since we have two different. Results of a meeting of, you know, one organization that did this. And it did work and one that didn't, that maybe we should. Investigate more thoroughly. Why the one failed and why the other one is working so that we could not, wouldn't have to face, you know, that controversy going forward. I think that it is necessary. Our town is too small for us to have all these organizations trying to. Exist on their own. It's just not going to work and. And I've struggled with it because I wasn't supportive of it, but I think it's the right way to go. But I do think that we should do some more investigations and we shouldn't rush into it. That's just my concern. Thank you very much.
We'll close public comments. Give opportunity for any board members from the EDC. The DDA or. Chamber that wish to have final comments or input. I think. Ms. Spicer's recommendation makes a, makes a lot of sense and it would be prudent to at least have someone. Provide us a, the information on how it worked in Jackson, what the process was, what the transition was. Pros and cons sort of thing. My concern is with the keeping the funding straight and separate and accounted for. Ms. Spicer, you had comments?
I believe that's just from earlier, so.
All right. Seeing no further comments, may I have a motion to adjourn? Is there support? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all for participating. Have a pleasant evening.